Recording in progress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, November 2nd, meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in the front room. In compliance with open meeting laws, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. At this time, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, can we have a roll call?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mrs. Perret?
Here.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven present.
Thank you. We'll go to public announcements by committee members, and I'll start to my left.
Just quickly, it's really fun driving to work in the morning and seeing all the parents, the moms and dads at the bus stops, getting their kids on the bus, and it's so fun to watch the moms waving goodbye for at least a minute on average until their kids are settled in on the bus and on their way to school. So I thank all those good parents out there.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I'd like to commend five-star one of the drivers, right in front of my house. He was dropping off some students, and when he was dropping them off, a car went to go by the bus, and he blew his horn and started pointing out the window, and the car stopped. So it was good to see that happen, and it shows that our drivers, or at least some of them are paying attention, but I would assume all of them are. But it was good to see the car stop and take notice of what the driver was telling them to do. So kudos to that driver. I sent the bus number to Ann Koss.
Thank you. Grace?
All set.
Sam?
Yes, I want to, I hope that all of our students had a safe and happy Halloween. I did get a chance to go to the Spooktacular over at Litwin School. It was a great event. It was great to see all the students and the staff participating. I also want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Election Day, and it is really important that everybody goes out and votes, and also next Friday is Veterans Day. So I want to wish all our veterans a happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Chet?
All set.
We'll go to my right. Doug?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Sandra?
I was not at the 10-19 School Committee meeting due to being in Bellevue, Washington for a family member's celebration of 88 years of good health. Since then, I have viewed the meeting of 10-19 and would have voted no, along with Mr. Shumsky, against the purchase of 350 Memorial Drive for the school department. My no vote seems to be substantiated with the recent reports in the Springfield Republican and editorials about student needs in Massachusetts, as well as the recent student occurrence at Chicopee Comprehensive. Spending $8 million on a building seems frivolous at a time when we need to direct the money to the programs, to tutoring, to stipends for our teachers, paraprofessionals, and nurses who are in the trenches working with the students to narrow the education gap. We cannot let this generation of students continue to fall behind. The ESER dollars are for our student needs for their loss during COVID, so obviously the high dollar amount that Chicopee received is to benefit the students and the education that they need and not for a school building. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Ron?
All set.
And David?
All set, Mayor.
Thank you. If I may, I just wanted to let everyone know that Ward Three School Committee member, Salo de Paulo, has resigned. He has moved out of the city, and this has triggered us to start the process. The school committee policy that guides this process is called B6, which provides for me as mayor to convene a joint convention of the school committee and the city council, at which the meeting, the vacancy is filled by a majority vote of the two bodies. We can utilize this process we used the last few times, which consisted of both the mayor's office and the superintendent's office, advertising the vacancy and instructing those wishing to be considered to send letters of interest to either the mayor's office or the superintendent's office. If there is more than one person interested, we could provide each of the candidates with an opportunity to speak for a limited period before the joint convention. I would suggest the following timeline. We start advertising immediately. Again, for clarity, you would have to be a resident of Ward Three here in the city of Chicopee. The seat is a ward seat, and again, school committee. The deadline that we would expect would, I think, should be sufficient of three weeks, which would bring us to November 22nd, and I'd be calling a joint convention of the school committee probably the week of the 28th, which is a Monday, or Tuesday, the 29th. This timeline would ensure that we have a full committee when the committee turns to consider a new representative to serve for Ward Three. Oh, I'm sorry. And also will help timeline-wise with our superintendent search as well. We'll fulfill the seat before we start the interview process as a committee. That's my update, and we'll move on now to the superintendent's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple announcements. First, I had a follow-up phone call with MSBA about the Anna E. Berry School, and they let us know that Anna E. Berry School is a priority school. However, we won't know what it looks like or what it will consist of, of an new Anna E. Berry, until if and when we're accepted into the MSBA grant program. We will know officially whether we're accepted in December 21st, 2022, either at the end of this month, November, or the first weekend in December, or whether we're accepted into the grant program of December 2023. So currently, that's where we currently stand right now. We're just waiting to hear whether or not we'll be in the grant program for MSBA for this year or the following year. And as it stands right now, it's an 80-20 split, so we're looking to hopefully be accepted into the grant program this year, but we're also competing against Brockton High School, which is the largest high school probably east of the Mississippi. So the larger the schools are and the more money that's involved, it cuts the pot of money down. So we're waiting to hear, and as soon as I hear word, then I'll let everybody else know. The other announcement I have is yesterday I had the privilege and the pleasure of attending the Unified Basketball Game yesterday between Chicopee Comp and Chicopee High School. Chicopee Comp won 49-40, but it was very entertaining, and it was good to see the kids, their commitment and collaboration among the kids, and also their happiness to be playing with each other. And I just wanted to recognize a couple of some people involved in that game. The head coach for Chicopee High School Pacers was Karen Riley. Assistant coach John Vega. Liaison was Erica Carlson. I do apologize if I mispronounce some people's names. Bus monitor Nicole Traxel and Ed Kalafarsky. The student athletes that participated for Chicopee High were Dwayne Barker, Calais Campbell, Legler, Thathan DeRiro, Oscar Lee, Mary Gally, Ortiz, Lillian Pine, Ryan Bezon, Nathan Chernard, Ezekiel Ferrier, Dominic Mason, Mia Perkins. And the band was also there for Chicopee High School, was led by Samantha Fran Coso. And the Chicopee High School cheerleaders were there. For Chicopee Comprehensive, high school coach, the head coach was Brittany North. Liaison again was Erica Carlson. Bus monitors were Jim Aldridge, Mary Ann Potter. The student athletes for Chicopee Comp were Abigail Diaz, Julia Hul, Austin Roas, Nathan Hurley, Natalie Fornier, Justin LaFontaine, Sebastian Galizara, Aiden Rafferty, Joey Bertholm, Drew Orlozowski, Alexis Pagan Ramos, Nathan Rodriguez. And also for Chicopee Comp, their band was there, led by David Kerr. And the Chicopee Comprehensive High School cheerleaders were there. And I also like to thank Sean Mack and the athletic program for actually having this program together and hosting tomorrow, but it was a great event to be a participant of and to watch the kids play the basketball game. And that's it, Mayor.
Sounded like a fun time.
It was.
Excellent. Thank you. Visitors, we have, oh, I'm sorry, public input. We have two signed up for public input. Speakers should properly identify themselves with their name and address. Public input sessions have a time limit of 30 minutes or three minutes for individual speaker. Speakers are first come, first served. Character assassinations and derogatory attacks will not be tolerated, and questions by the public may refer to the committee or administrative staff for consideration and a later response. Up first, we have Lisa Bianvene. Welcome, Lisa.
Welcome. Lisa Bianvene, 34 Everett Street. I want to talk about the ESER funding again. First, though, I have to say, I did watch the Mondays with Morton episode with you two gentlemen, and it was, it was good. It was very entertaining. I thought it gave a different perspective of both of you, so I really enjoyed it. I thought it was a very positive thing. I actually watched the whole thing, and it...
We had one of you. That's great.
Yeah, I thought it was great. But, you know, and it brought, in my mind, a couple of things. One was how good it was, because you were in the café, I believe. You were in the café, how good it is for the administration, for everybody to be so connected into the schools, which gets me to 350 Memorial Drive, because I think that separates you from the schools, and that becomes a property that is, I guess, I was thinking about, because the superintendent was talking about the 71% poverty rate, I believe, in the city, and the changing demographics and the urban city that we are, which we've been an urban city for a long time. We've, I would have never considered us a bedroom community even when I was growing up, as a, we've always been a blue-collar, hard-working community. And as you were talking about that, I thought, you know what, if I feel maybe, and I was thinking about the mayor's experience when he was talking, growing up, and how you feel if maybe you don't have everything that everybody else around you has, would I find 350 Memorial Drive welcoming, or would that put me off if I'm in that situation? And you know what? I would not find it welcoming. That would put me off. I would feel like I'm going someplace where they are better than me. Not really, but that's the illusion. And I think the, not even illusion, the perception. And I think we do need to think about perceptions. And I think it's interesting about Anna Berry, because I had the idea, really, wouldn't, if we're building a new Anna Berry School, you know, God willing, that we get the money, that, you know, would administrative offices be good there, where you're more integrated into the system, where you're already building a new school, and that $8 million could be used for what the community is looking for it to be used for? Because on the survey, it said 68%, the community survey results said they want the money spent on the student social, emotional, mental health, well-being. And I think what happened at Comp on Friday, which was on the news again today, tells you that our children need, that their social, emotional well-being needs to be addressed, and the learning gaps need to be addressed. And using that money for 350 Memorial Drive is not a shoe-in, because I actually called the Title I Grant Office to see what's involved with using that money from ESER for this, because I'm not one, I've asked a few committee members, you know, what has to happen, and everyone just said, well, we can use the money for this. Well, to me, that's not a good enough answer. Like the mayor, I have a degree in engineering, you know, trust but verify, always verify. So I called the Title I Office, and they were talking about that there are a lot of requirements and checkpoints. This isn't just a given. You know, it is allowable, but it has to be reasonable, and it has to be tied to COVID. And having, you know, outside conferences is not tied to COVID. Moving things from other schools into there, like Chicopee TV, that's not COVID. That has nothing to do with the gaps in learning for the children. So I think we really need to step back and pause and think about what the children need the most, not what would be nice for us adults, but what is best for the children. And keep up with the Mondays with Morton, because I really thought that was a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public input is Mary Beth Costello.
Thank you, Mayor View.
You're welcome. Welcome.
Thanks. Mayor View, school committee members, I just want to take a minute to thank school committee member Ron Bernard. The other day, we were out counting cars in a parking lot on Monday morning and on Monday afternoon. And the reason this was done is because there's been controversy in regards of who owns and who has rights to the parking lot on Britton Street, across the street from Fair Haven Apartments, and across the street from the Fairview Library. So I'm hoping that in the future, very near future, we can resolve this and move forward. So we have in writing who has access to that parking lot, because there's a lot of different conversations about who can park there, who cannot park there. I did speak with the mayor's chief of staff, Michael Pease, and he has a very good memory of what was on there, and he can remember it as parking for the residents of Fair Haven. But as time has gone by, we're not quite sure. So I would like the school department to look into this so that we can have a definite answer. And I also would like to thank Sean Mack. And in reading the page today on sports, it looks like the girls' hockey team from Comp is going to merge with Pope Francis. Is that true?
Correct.
Oh, that's wonderful. That gives girls a wonderful opportunity to play high school hockey. So I'm very happy that we're progressing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Visitors, non-scheduled approval of minutes, 22-11-1.
Move that the minutes of the tours held on October 12, 2022 be approved.
Susan, motion.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 22-11-2.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on October 19, 2022 be approved.
Done.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Reports 22-11-3.
Report on personnel action. I have two retirees, and I have a little bit of information about both. First is Nancy Wegman, Library Media Tech, Stephannic, 28 years, effective date 9/30/2022. Nancy Wegman, dedicated staff member at Stephannic since 1994. She wore many hats in the building. During the pandemic, she went above and beyond to support staff and students, well beyond her formal job description. Nancy had a special way for students to fall in love with literature, and for years, she provided students with storytelling time and sending books home. She will be greatly missed at Stephannic. Thank you for your 28 years of service. The next person that is retiring is Judy Slater, grade six teacher, Bellamy, 34 years, 11 months, 11/25/2022 effective date. A consummate professional at Bellamy since 1988. Judy's dedicated caring individual who is well-respected within the Bellamy community. She didn't ask, didn't speak out often, but when she did, people listened, fellow teachers and admin alike. Although her position will be filled, her institutional knowledge and experience can never be replaced. Thank you for your 35 years of service. Thank you both for your service to the Chicopee Public Schools, students and their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other discussion? We'll move on to new business, 22-11-4.
Move that the bills warrant S102122 totaling $796,138.53 be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Chet, could you read the warrants into the record for us?
Really? There are two warrants submitted by our Director of Budget and Finance, John Mirecki, and traditionally, what I will do is to read the total of the two warrants, and then we will subsequently act upon those two warrants individually. Under athletics, we've spent $38,358. Food services, $253,746. General expenses, $154,086. Grants, $270,603. Maintenance, $161,337. Utilities, $233,873. Special education, $119,819. Student activities, $4,621. Transportation, $460,529. Telecommunications, $19,157. Again, the grand total was $1,716,413.
Thank you, Chet. We'll be voting on the first warrant, which is warrant S102122, $796,139. Any questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 22-11-5.
Move that the bills warrant S102822 totaling $920,274.25 be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Again, this is the second part of the warrants that Chet read in totality. We'll be voting on this one individually. Sarah, roll call?
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. 22-11-6.
Move that the elementary dance be approved as a new course.
Check. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Can I just say something?
Susan?
This is an interesting new class that we're offering our students at Belcher School. So we hired a music teacher. It's on our personnel report this evening, and the backup information talks a little bit about how this instruction and creative movement, students will improve the five areas of health-related fitness. That includes cardiovascular endurance, flexibility, musical muscular strength, excuse me, balance and coordination. And I think that one of the real reasons for introducing this new course is it's supposed to be a reinforcer and improving attendance among our students. So it's going to help their physical and emotional and social well-being. So I think it's a great new class. I'm going to stay in contact with Principal Carlin and see how it goes. I wrote him an email last night, finding out a little bit more information about it, but unfortunately, I didn't push the right buttons, and it didn't go through to him in time. But I am going to visit the building or have conversations with him in the near future, because I'm glad that we're offering this new course to our students.
I agree. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 22-11-7.
Move that the request for the Career and Technical Education Division for 12 students to attend the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference in Marlboro, Mass., November 20, 2022 through November 21, 2022 be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Susan?
Thank you to Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Demers, who are going to be attending with the students at the Skills Leadership Conference, and for Principal Lamath, too, for making it all possible. And the students are going to have a great time.
Thank you. All set. Sandra?
I think this is another exciting adventure for the students. Historically, Chicopee students have done well. Just being able to participate in this event is a wonderful experience in itself, so wishing them all a positive trip.
Me too. Tim?
Thank you. I just wanted to credit Mr. Wozniak and Mrs. Demers, who are my two teachers when I was in the career tech at Chicopee Comp. They do a wonderful job with running that Skills USA thing that we have going on, and it's really nice to see it continuing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 22-11-8.
Move that the following requests to use school facilities be approved. A Municipal Police Training Committee to use Chicopee High School November 9, 2022, and November 10, 2022. And B, Bodies and Emotions, to use Bellamy Middle School May 16, 2023 through May 20, 2023. And C, Dazzle Studio of Dance, to use Bellamy Middle School June 16, 2023, and June 17, 2023. 16, 2023, and June 17, 2023.
Sandra, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Don?
I know it's been a couple of years since we had dance studios using our schools, but my memory serves me right, we used to have to waive a policy to bring it outside of Chickapi School, Dance School, to use our, is that still the policy, or? I think we just have tradition, we just vote, and we don't have to waive the policy. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, that's fine.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So that concludes our regular order of business. Susan, executive session? Don, if you could?
I'd like to refer into Facilities Sub-
Let me pause for a minute. I apologize. New business, continue. Don?
I'd like to put in the Facilities Subcommittee a couple items. One of them is I'd like to review the grants, i.e. ESER, for building security and for facility upgrades to any of our other buildings, as a Plan B to 350 Memorial Drive. But also, we have another grant that we received for ventilation that I'd like to have also discussed with the facilities director and the superintendent of the facility, so that we can understand what's going to be done. And I'd like to put that into Facilities, so we're legal to have that discussion.
Duly noted. New business to my left. Anyone? To my right, anyone? New business? Seeing none. Now, Susan, executive session?
Move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of approving executive session minutes, and we will return to the regular order of business, not televised.
So can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Yeah, I think I just made it.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call to go into executive session.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Recording.